I'd like to call and order the April 22nd meeting of the Campbell County School Board. It's good to see so many people here tonight. Hope you have a grand old time. First thing we're gonna do is stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Have a seat. First order of business is the VSBA art contest winner, Dr. Stanley. Need more room? I can pinch him out of there, he's gone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's great to start our meeting tonight.
Let's get organized.
So it gives me great pleasure to start our meeting tonight by recognizing some student accomplishments. I don't know if you all remember, but back in March, we had our VSBA regional meeting in Appomattox. And in 1989, VSBA started to recognize student artwork as a way to just recognize students' artistic abilities in having this regional contest for elementary, middle, and high schools. And when we were at our meeting in Appomattox, they went through a long list of winners. And when we got to middle school, Campbell County had a first-place winner in Jude Wellman, first-place middle school. So we want to congratulate Jude, he's here tonight with his mom Serena, who teaches middle school math for us at Brookfield High School, his dad Greg, and his older brother Levi, and I didn't catch your name.
I'm his art teacher.
You're Michelle. So on behalf of the Campbell County School Board and the VSBA, Jude, I'd like to give you this certificate. And then for your parents, I also saved you a copy of the newspaper article. So if you all have any questions of Jude, I'm kinda curious what other things you do, you certainly are artistic.
Well, I was involved in indoor percussion high school group. And I'm in percussion ensemble and jazz band and concert band at my school.
Well, thank you all for being here, yes.
Yeah, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but your artwork will then go to the state?
It's in Charlottesville, where it's on display.
Yeah, and so it'll go around, it'll go around, and then at the annual state convention, it'll be competing again. So we may see you again. And the other thing I would like to say is that we went quite a few years without even presenting art at our regional meetings. And so I'm really glad that we're back in doing that, and here's the fruits of our effort, so thank you very much.
And thank you, Michelle, for your efforts to get that. Well, thank you all very much, Jude, you make it all worthwhile, so thank you for being here, congratulations.
Thank you very much. The next is the people we always love to see, the Campbell County Education Foundation. You all have some smiles on your faces, so it must be good news.
We bring money.
Will you introduce your team you have with you here tonight?
I am, I'm planning to do that in my comments as well. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Stanley, and members of the Campbell County School Board. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Rose Epperson, and I'm here to represent the Campbell County Educational Foundation. This group of volunteers focuses their work providing financial assistance to our students to help them with their post-secondary pursuits. The Campbell County Educational Foundation Board members include Susan Brant, Dean Farmer, Linda Grubba, Vicki Maddox, Brandon Treadway, Sam Vance, Amy Hale, and Clay Stanley. Established in 2017 after today, this foundation will have contributed over 186,000 to our school board to support the Dual Enrollment CTE Program, the Altavista Future Center, and college and career programs at Brookfield High School, Russburg High School, and William Campbell. These programs prepare Campbell County students for post-secondary pursuits, reduce student loan debt, provide a skilled workforce to local employers, and ultimately contribute toward the betterment of our community. The Campbell County School Board has made compelling use of these funds and has continued to be the area leader, sending more students to the CTE program than all other area schools. Through this program, students are able to explore a variety of well-paying careers that are in high demand in our area. This foundation's support has continued to grow each year. We receive numerous individual and corporate donations and significant grant support from local foundations. Once again, we are increasing our donation level and have a check for $33,185 to present tonight. This amount, combined with the gift of $27,500 presented in the fall, will provide funding to pay for all of this year's CTE Academy students' books, supplies, and materials. We are thrilled to provide this support and even more excited to see our student interests and participation in these programs grow. I also have the pleasure of introducing a Campbell County student who has graciously accepted an invitation to speak about her experiences through the CTE Academy. Morgan Fitz is a senior at Russburg High School and a student at the CTE Academy at Central Virginia Community College in the Criminal Justice Program. Last year, she participated in the cosmetology program at the Campbell County Technical Center. Throughout her high school years, Morgan has been a dependable student with a strong work ethic and strong academics. She also worked at Long Mountain Grill and currently works at Sweet Frog. Morgan plans to become a legal assistant once she graduates from Russburg High School and CBCC. I'd like to welcome Morgan.
Good evening, I would like to thank the Campbell County Education Foundation for supporting my education in the CTE Academy at CBCC. This program has been the foundation of my upcoming career, and I'm very proud to be a part of it, so thank you.
Hey, before y'all leave. Just speaking for the board, we appreciate so much your efforts in going out and pounding doors and soliciting these donations. I mean, we appreciate it more than you can ever imagine, and we just truly do appreciate it. You all are the ones that deserve a big hand, let's give 'em a big hand. Thank you. Alrighty. College and Career Readiness, Dr. Hale.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Stanley, and members of the board. I'm here today to give you an update on SchoolLinks, which is a college and career readiness platform that we implemented this school year. I also have two special people who have helped me with this project that we'll also be sharing. Elizabeth Knowles, who you all know as our instructional specialist, and also a familiar face, Erica Ford, who is currently an Associate Director of Advising Technology at the University of Virginia, but also a former Campbell County employee and also graduate. So we're excited to share more about this today. So the College and Career Readiness Platform called SchoolLinks, it really truly is an all-in-one platform. So it is one that includes a variety of different components. We have primarily, though, really been focused on being able to really start to look at our college application manager. But you can see here that it also has student services and counseling, as well as career and technical education. With this, students are using SchoolLinks in a variety of ways. And we really started this process early on by starting to think about what were the needs of our secondary school counselors. And one of the things that they shared with us is the amount of time that they truly spend on paperwork. And being able to think about ways that we can digitize this, to make it easier to use, and something that really is helpful for them and also helpful for students. And so at this point, I will have Ms. Knowles share a little bit more about the career exploration components.
Good evening. In our middle schools currently, all of our sixth-grade students participate in career exploration. They all take a class in career exploration where they first start kind of diving into what it is they want to do. Students can investigate the multitude of careers in the platform by region, career cluster, and their personal interests. Each career has a video description, all of the information that they need to know about the educational requirements, salary, job growth, opportunities, and related careers. There's also a built-in Q&amp;A within the platform. But one of the really neat things about SchoolLinks is that if students have a question that's not answered, they can actually submit questions, and people in the industry will respond to them and answer their specific questions. Our students have primarily used SchoolLinks this year for college application process. That process begins with the college search. Students can search for a specific school they know they are interested in, or based on a general area within 100 miles from home, more than 100 miles from home, or a particular degree that they want to pursue. As they narrow down their search, they save their schools for the applications by favoriting them and making notes about what they like about each school. Because parents and counselors have access to each student's SchoolLink account, this is a great opportunity for collaboration with families and the school.
So before they actually start applying, students go to the Learning Hub, and this connects them directly to financial aid services. And all of the applications go through SchoolLinks. And so it integrates with something called Common App. So those of you who have had seniors, you remember going through that process as you're working through that. And then they start to set their goals for the likely, the target, and then their reach schools. And again, this is just talking about the college components. We will also address some of the career components as well because that is tied to it. And then the part that follows is really this streamlined application process. Teachers are able to give recommendations. And again, they're able to log into one spot to see where are students with their applications, with moving forward, and then also monitor to see, okay, what still needs to be completed all in one. But one of the nice pieces, again, are all of the recommendations are filtered through this versus having a lot of different emails and logging into different platforms. After the application process, students then also are able to apply for local scholarships. So this is featured within SchoolLinks that we're able to actually add those to them, but also match them to national ones based on their interest. So it's not just limiting them to what might be available locally, which last year, we had students who applied for almost, and received $2 million in scholarships. So we are very strong with that number, but also being able to think about other scholarships that we may not necessarily know in our area. They're able to do events, and then also they are able to look at the social media follow-ups, for example, with the FAFSA nights that they've had. And I will applaud our schools, the FAFSA changed this year, I know any parent, I'm sorry, guardian, that's had to deal with that. But they've been having repeated FAFSA nights to really try to help navigate that process. Nothing that's on our end, but just making sure that parents and guardians and families feel comfortable completing that process. Before I show a video that highlights one of our students, I will have Ms. Ford share a little bit about what are some of the components behind the scenes of why this is important work. And so she's gonna talk a little bit about how we were able to prepare for some of these events before you actually get to hear from a student.
Hi. So as we prepared last summer to launch SchoolLinks, we saw it as an opportunity to really look at college and career readiness holistically within the division. And so we took that opportunity to reach out to several of our school counselors across the division to ask them, what do you do currently? What does it look like as far as the type of activities and experiences their students are able to participate in? How would you like to broaden those experiences or those activities? What type of trainings have you previously received? And what type of trainings or more additional information would you like to currently get? And what many of them shared with us was that they feel like the economy and our industry is changing so much and that they know so much, but they want to continue to learn so they can continue to communicate and educate our students so that they have the best opportunities. We also took an opportunity to look into the literature and what the research says about college and career readiness programs that are effective and successful with students. And the literature shares that college and career readiness is more than just academic knowledge. Students need much more broad skills in order to go into post-secondary endeavors and be successful. We see that college and career readiness can't just start in high school. It really needs to start before high school and middle school and elementary school in some instances. We see that stakeholders need to be broadly engaged. So that means not just their teachers and not just their counselors, but industry, community, the entire broad width of individuals that interact with those students are important in helping them to shape and identify what they may be interested in doing once they leave our high schools. We see that students need robust opportunities to explore college and career readiness. And that doesn't just mean classroom opportunities, but getting out there and going to these places and experiencing them and visits. So it's holistic in their type of experiences. We also recognize and see that research says that technology can be a foundational tool in helping students to explore college and career readiness, which is what we hope that SchoolLinks will be for us. And so as part of all of this, we did undertake a number of professional development opportunities to prepare teachers and counselors to integrate this. We held faculty meetings across the high schools in the fall in order to prepare them to see what SchoolLinks would do and how they could use it. And we also helped to develop training documentation and integrated a scope and sequence so that students could participate in a wide range of activities utilizing SchoolLinks. So a lot of preparation went into the program.
So this is a familiar face, this is a current senior who's getting ready to graduate, Lauren Kirby. And she's gonna share just a little bit about her experiences with SchoolLinks.
As a senior at Russburg High School, I have absolutely loved using SchoolLinks. This past semester, I have spent a lot of my time applying for scholarships, and SchoolLinks has made this process stress-free and user-friendly. My favorite part of SchoolLinks is how each scholarship is presented with information that allows me to quicker determine if the scholarship is relevant to me. I highly recommend using SchoolLinks.
So one of the things that we are doing currently is we are looking to expand our usage at the middle school level. We have heard from our middle school students, teachers, and counselors that they're excited to see what this can mean for them. And really, that exposure piece is so important in middle school to start thinking about where they want to be. Just some statistics before we talk about the future. By the numbers, we do have a super-user school, and that would be Altavista Combined School. Stephanie Tyree, the Future Center Director there, has really led the way with use of SchoolLinks. And they by far have the most logins by students with over 5,000 logins. And they're not our demographically largest high school, per se. There have been 16,000 student logins throughout the school year. And then our other high schools are right behind that as far as having the logins, with middle schools starting to get there, as they have been using this really in their career investigations class and really starting to get familiar with that. Additionally, we are very excited to see, we're starting our senior exit survey right now. So we are doing this all through SchoolLinks where students will add their new email address so we can, you know, stay in contact with them and see how they're doing. Because we do want to be able to survey them down the road and ask them, how are you doing? And having that contact with them. And we also see that students really are, they continue to be interested in a variety of careers. Health and medical sciences continues to be a large one for our area, which makes sense. And we do have a lot of students who are very much interested in that pathway. And we also see that with our applications for the CTE Academy that's available to them during their senior year. So that is something that we're looking forward to. We are also having teachers currently develop lessons, and so we have been sharing those with each faculty and will continue to do so. But we really want to make sure students understand that there are a variety of pathways open for them and things they may not necessarily even be thinking about for opportunities. Ashley Wilson is our Work-Based Learning Coordinator, and so she is also going to be helping next school year with our Work-Based Learning additional add-on that we have. This will allow us to connect to industry partners, it will also allow them to connect with us. And we have started sharing that with even our partners who are here for our College and Career Day in March. We also are really excited to be able to have a digital academic and career plan that follows students. This is something they start doing in the middle school, but it will actually continue to follow them. So that way, they have that for really, from their seventh grade year on. And they do start a little bit of that in sixth grade. And like I said, the College and Career Day was our first introduction of SchoolLinks to some of these partners so that way they could actually share internships and opportunities that are available with their business as well. So we are very much just getting started with this project. We really do see how it could help our students, help our teachers with paperwork, help our counselors with paperwork, but continue to be something relevant for students that reflects current job statistics. And some of the lessons that they have been working on, again, tie to career exploration, college exploration, work-based skills, which are important, you know, being able to shake a hand, to make eye contact, and then also goal-setting, but understanding that goals can change over time, and that's okay. It's important to be monitoring that and working through it. And so lastly, we wanted to just be able to answer any questions that you might have. During June, I will be happy to share some of our results from our senior exit survey and be able to share that with you. And then we'll start our alumni tracking down the road. I will say, anyone who is a Campbell County alum of public schools, you can get in SchoolLinks yourself. You can set yourself up as an alumni. So you are welcome to do that and just kind of see what it's like. And we can continue to survey you too, so, yes. But yeah, any questions that you have?
Pretty overwhelming what's available. I mean, I think it's, even as slow as I am, I think it's... I kinda laughed at Lauren, searching for college is stress-free. I'm sure it is for the child, I'm sure the parents are going, oh gosh. But I mean, it's great that all of this is available there. And then you say you're gonna tie in the occupational group that was here for the career fair. A lot of those will be tied in there as well?
Absolutely.
It ain't getting better than that.
So we are excited, but we do see this as a multi-year project as we continue to expand.
So are all universities, colleges, universities tied into this? Are they all members of SchoolLink?
So the way it works is that if they, so many universities and colleges use Common App. So it will direct you kind of that way. But then if a university doesn't use Common App or college, it says that. But when a student were to apply, it says, your school, your division uses SchoolLinks. So it prompts them that SchoolLinks is how you use it. And so it's really kind of a connector for them, SchoolLinks does that part for us, so they're able to do that. The other piece that we, that SchoolLinks is a major advantage with is we have digitized transcripts, which is a big deal, because it allows us to be able to send them efficiently and digitally versus a paper copy in the mail. And anybody who mails stuff, you know how that goes. So it is something that we are excited to have a consistent digital transcript.
How are scholarships put into this?
So if it's...
Done local counselors?
If the counselors do it, if it's local, they're able to put that in there. If it's the national, they're just populated by SchoolLinks themselves if it's national or regional.
Is there a question down here on this left end?
Is some of the laptops, because every student has a laptop, it's automatically on all the laptops?
It is, yes. It's linked in our student directory that we use, it's on that for them, so they're able to just click on the button. And I will say, the counselors have done a good job of really helping students with this process through by meeting. We started really with seniors this year, to be honest, because that was the big one with the college application. And we started those conversations early. They let us pilot it in the spring to get a little familiar with it before we'd even truly become, you know, under contract. And then we had training in the summer for that. And they actually came in person, which I appreciate. And I will say, our customer service has been very positive with SchoolLinks.
Was it at the beginning, is there, does this actually tie into the application process as well to the college?
It does.
So a child, a student wants to be a biomedical engineer and wants to apply to three universities. You can do all that through this, including his application, application fees, et cetera?
It's all done through this. Now, the fees are a little different because it does depend on a student's, if they have waivers, you know, that type of thing. Some students qualify for waivers, but the application gets sent this way.
Any more questions?
Should've done this years ago.
Well, this was something that really wanted to start last year based on feedback from our counselors and just really excited about what it can mean for us and our students.
And I just am excited about the opportunity for the surveys and follow-up. And I've shared this before, that, you know, we think we're doing a good job. We do everything that we, everything that we can to do a good job. But until we actually get evidence that we're doing a good job, we don't know what we need to change. So I'm very excited about that aspect, I think that's something we've needed for a long time. So I'm excited, and I hope you're gonna have a good template and good follow-up. And then make changes where changes are needed.
Absolutely, and we do continually reflect on how to make this better.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Couple of speakers tonight. It's Jackie Mendez. Come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jackie Mendez, and I am a resident here in Evington, Virginia. So, I came to talk a little bit about, and I've already sent this to Dr. Stanley, is LUCOM, the School of Medicine, who's now celebrating its 10th year, is offering a free summer program for all rising seniors in all the schools here in Campbell County for a day to explore a career in osteopathic medicine. So, we're hoping that parents are tuning into this, and I know that Dr. Stanley has sent it out, and I have another 40 positions, 40, you know, 40 slots available, and we'd like to see the Campbell kids partake in this. It's going to be amazing, because it's all going to be hands-on. We're not going to talk to them for four hours, and we expect to show them how to suture, suturing, which is a surgical technique. We're going to teach them a little bit about what osteopathic manipulation is. That's kind of the marriage between oste-, marriage between physical therapy and chiropractor. We're going to show them something related to emergency medicine care, and we are going to have medical jeopardy for them, and hopefully, it's going to be a five-hour day for them. It's on Monday, June 3rd. I'm going to leave the flyers here for you guys, the applications, easy directions, and so I'm hoping to see more Campbell County kids. I have all kinds of kids coming. There's no academic requirement, no letter of recommendation, no transcripts. We really just want to engage the young people in a future career in medicine here in the county, and hopefully, they might be interested in going into med school, learning what a doctor does and its training and stuff. So, I will leave this here, so you can spread it in your social media, among your counselors, among your science teachers, so, thank you.
I have to apologize. I didn't hear exactly, LUCOM?
LUCOM, Liberty University College of Osteopathic Medicine. So, we nickname it, or they're all known as comms, or it's College of Osteopathic Medicine, LU is Liberty University, so. So, if anyone, again, if anyone knows of a parent, we don't require anything but just a short, brief application, and, and then we'll be getting back in touch with them to come join us on Monday, June 3rd.
What grade levels are you?
Rising seniors, which means that they have to be, a senior comes in the fall. So, we're talking about probably 15 to 17-year-olds that can, they're all, they're going to have an anatomical exercise, so they're going to see a lung, or they're going to see a brain, a human brain, or they're going to see an eye, or a foot, or a leg, so that they can see what the human body is, and they own one of those pieces, which is me.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For sharing that.
Thank you.
We got an intermission.
That's great.
Ms. Coleman. You got to follow that now.
She always does that to me. I couldn't do that. I couldn't, oh no. Eyeballs and all, no, I couldn't do it.
Come on.
I couldn't. Couldn't. That's why I became a teacher, because I couldn't do that. Anyway, good evening. I'm Crystal Coleman from Alta Vista. My topic tonight is something I had planned for last month, but as I have yet to figure out how to be in two places at the same time, I'll speak about it tonight. I am referring to the Right Before Your Eyes presentation. First, thank you for spearheading this in our community. I hope that the presentations after the one that I saw were somewhat better attended, because the topic is crucial for everyone involved in the life of minors. I've been in education all my life and made every attempt to keep up to date on issues affecting our children. I can say the same thing about quite a few administrators I've spoken to since they attended the presentation. One would think there isn't much that could get past any of us, but one would be gravely mistaken. I drove home that night with two mindsets. One was total thankfulness that I didn't have minors still at home, and the other was total disbelief at the dangers that are only a text or laptop away. Can it be possible that there ever was a day when we warned our children about stranger danger and thought we had been good, responsible parents? I eventually wound up with a headache. Parents, you are walking a fine line today. You don't, you can't be helicopter parents and not allow your children to learn from their mistakes, but you must be knowledgeable about what's out there and how quickly and easily it can be in the inner sanctum of their own bedrooms. I urge this board to offer the presentation again in the fall as part of your back-to-school events. Make it part of the professional development for your staff, and while I applaud you for taking the first steps in the human trafficking issue, this presentation only touched ever so slightly on it. Much more needs to present, be presented to the community in real life and real time on that topic if we are going to protect our children, but bravo for taking the first steps. Thank you.
I think we addressed it at the last meeting. I don't think anybody was here, but we echoed your sentiments about Mrs. Tanner's presentation, and it was extremely informative. Gathered a lot. Like you, I'm happy I don't have kids that age anymore, but I do have grandkids, but Karen, you're going to have to do it some more and get bigger audiences. I guess we're going to have, give out prizes or something to get people to come, but thank you so much. Hi. Need to approve the March 25th meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mrs. Tanner, that we approve the March 25th minutes. Any questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the bills and moved to approve payment.
Second. Motion by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Maddox, that we pay the bills. Any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Acceptance for donations. Michelle.
Tonight, you have a list of 36 donations for approval. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Yeah, motion to approve with a huge thanks, my goodness, for those who didn't pull up the attachment, a total of $33,613.84 in additional donations just for the last month to Campbell County schools and Pacific Life Foundation and Georgia Pacific LLC. You know, we're the largest of the donors, but yeah, great thanks to our community.
My second, Michelle.
Motion by Mrs. Parker, seconded by Mrs. Tanner, that we approve the donations. Any more questions or comments? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-resident tuition. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have one student listed for approval. Ask them, unless you have any questions, to approve that.
Motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, seconded by Dr. Miller, that we approve the non-resident tuition. Any questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of request for supplemental appropriations. Michelle.
Tonight, you have two appropriations for approval. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Ms. Vaughn, and seconded by Ms. Tanner, that we approve the request for supplemental appropriations. Anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ms. Hunley. How's our people going?
We're going. You can see from the personnel report, our principals are doing a great job. It's going to be May before we know it, and they are doing an excellent job of closing out this school year while already focusing on next year. So, the personnel report has a number of hires for next year on there. We still have about 30 more openings right now for next year that we're working on, but they're still plugging away at it. So, unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
30 motions, 30 openings for next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, this year, we're good. We're already focusing on next year.
Mr. Dr. Rinella.
Sir.
What's your status?
Five part-time short and five full-time short still. We started a CEO last day. Just got three people in it, so we're, yeah, we're still chipping away at it.
Okay.
How long is that class?
Sir.
How long is that class?
The class, it takes about 45 hours, give or take, a little bit, but 45 hours is what's required in this, and the driving is a little bit additional time and some support and some, some of the driving skills that we've certainly given that extra time before we take them out in GMV to get tested, but you're really looking at, it's about two, two and a half weeks of time for them to get through the course and be behind the wheel of the car.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Tanner, that we approve the personnel report. Any more questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stanley.
Tonight, it's, it's my pleasure to, first of all, say, we've got a lot of incredible, remarkable people that work in our county, and I'm honored to be a part of it and to work with them on a daily basis, but tonight, we're going to put the spotlight on one particular person. Dr. Whitney Rinella, would you please come up? And I know that speaking about yourself is probably not your favorite thing to do, but just so you all know, I mean, Whitney has had an awful lot of things going on this year. One, she was nominated and received WFXR's Remarkable Woman recognition, and then she went on to be, to bring the first Cycle Kids program to Virginia. She brought that to her school, Concord Elementary. Then, she ended up going out to Los Angeles, where she actually won the Remarkable Woman contest, and then she just got back from the Boston Marathon last week. So, before I ask you to say anything and explain and connect all the dots, we've got a brief video we want to show you on her.
For months, they were nominated, and weeks after, we began introducing you to some of the ladies making a big difference in our communities, and the time has finally come to announce our local Remarkable Woman winner. We'll take you to her school. For the moment, WFXR News handed her a $1,000 check for the charity of her choice.
This year's Remarkable Woman winner is Dr. Whitney Rinella. Now, at, along with this award, we are donating $1,000 to a charity of your choosing.
What charity would that be? Cycle Kids!
It's a safe bicycling and nutrition program in which students learn first how to put the bikes together, how to wear a helmet safely.
We all came together to raise money, and she spearheaded the whole thing, because there's nothing that woman can't do.
I'm really excited.
She doesn't have to do all these things for us, but she chose to. Our principal is the greatest in the world.
This is for you. This is not about me. This is for you and our students at Concord, and I couldn't be any more proud to be a part of this project, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, big congratulations to Dr. Rinella and all of our nominees. You can take a look back at all of their stories on our website, wfxrtv.com. Just click on that Remarkable Women under our Community tab.
So, then, not only that, but you go out to Los Angeles and win, and win. Hollywood, California. So, can you kind of connect the dots there for us?
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stanley, for asking me, asking me to be here. It's great to see all of you. It is a little different standing up, talking about yourself. I'm just going to be honest, but this, this started out, a teacher wrote a nomination, and the general manager of WFXR called me in January and said, "There's this nomination, Remarkable Women. Do you know this particular teacher?". And I said, "Absolutely, I know that teacher. I love her, and I will nominate her for this." And he said, "No, she nominated you, and you've won." And so, that was just, it truly once-in-a-lifetime experience. What it was, what it includes is there were 112 NextStar news affiliates, affiliations around the country, and every news station had one Remarkable Women that won for that station. There were 10,000 nominations total, and so, 112 of us were taken to Los Angeles on April the 6th. It was a very fast trip. We flew on a Sunday, landed, went to, landed in Los Angeles. We stayed at the hotel right across from where the Oscars are filmed, and then they did their organization, just did an amazing job of featuring all of the women who are making differences in their community, who are advocating for, advocating for homelessness, domestic abuse, advocating for policy and law changes. There were three educators. There was a sped teacher. There was a librarian, and then myself as a principal. There were women who have started and spearheaded their own nonprofits, and so, all of us, the 112, won $1,000 for a charity of our choice, and mine was Cycle Kids, because we started a campaign back in the fall to bring, as Dr. Stanley said, the first and only Cycle Kids program to a school in Virginia. It started in Boston in 2004, and there are 80 of them, and now there is one at Concord. And so, we raised $25,000 with the support of literally donations from a dollar to 2,000 from individuals, businesses, community members, wrote grants. Speaking of, congratulations. This is amazing for our educational foundation, just that, that, to start the meeting that way, what wonderful work this committee, committee is doing for Campbell County. But it is a team effort. The community really wrapped their arms around this, and I shared the story with anyone and everyone who would listen, including Mr. Jones, who supported it, and we made it happen. And so, the day before spring break, we had a bike build assembly where literally the bikes came. My secretary called me one day, and she said, "The big rig is unloading", and I said, "What is the big rig unloading? What did I order?". And she's like, "It's the bikes." And so, they came very quickly, once we had met the $25,000 in the boxes, and so, the kids literally unboxed the bikes on, in the assembly. They, in groups of 10 to 12 with adult supervision, put the bikes together, and there are 10 bikes, there's 24 helmets, there's 125 textbooks that for our fourth and fifth graders, they're going to have this as part of their PE curriculum, and it will be fully implemented in the fall. So, with that, the donation for WFXR, the $1,000, went to Cycle Kids, went towards that $25,000, and again, it was just an amazing opportunity to be with so many women who are making such differences in their community. We've, we have found ways to really stay connected already. There's a monthly, there's going to be a monthly Google Meet where we all can stay connected, and now we have networking. If we are looking for something very specific, we have some other ways to tap into nonprofits that, you know, I didn't necessarily have access to or even know about before this.
Tell us, tell us what the winner did. I mean, I remember.
Great, yes. So, there were five finalists, and all of us won $1,000. The winner who won $10,000 for her nonprofit that she started 10 years ago, she is from The winner who won $10,000 for her nonprofit that she started 10 years ago, she is from the Bronx and it is called The Knowledge House. And 10 years ago, she started her, she came from a household that was $14,000. Their family income in the household was $14,000. And she recognized the need to train teenagers and young adults in computer technology skills. And so she started with coding and AI. And now they are finishing the program in a year and they're making six figures. So she has started it from the ground up and now there is one, she is staying in the Bronx because she said she came from the Bronx and that is where she is staying. But they have now started a program in Washington DC, Atlanta, Philadelphia, and now Los Angeles. And so she was the winner of $10,000 for her nonprofit, The Knowledge House. Yeah.
And, and I understand you had a tracking chip planted in you where the children watch you.
They did, yes, yes.
So you couldn't quit?
I could not quit. I could not quit. So this is, this was my third Boston Marathon. And I found Cycle Kids through the Boston Marathon. Cycle Kids is, it's a call to Boston Gives Back. And when I started to review all of the charities, I just, it became very quickly like, how can we make this happen? There is not a program like this anywhere around. And that was one of the first questions I asked when I met with them. And I said, how many are in Virginia? And they said, none. And I said, what would it take to get it to Virginia, to Concord? And she said, raise $25,000. So yes, we did that. And then every year, the students have, teachers have just done an incredible job of, of talking about me being in Boston and the marathon. And then there is a way that they could track. And I saw some screenshots of kids when they were watching me throughout the day. And so, no, I could not give up, even though there were times where my legs were not doing what I wanted them to do. It was a very hot day. But I started the day this year the same way that I started last year. The shirt that I wore, it has the fingerprints, thumbprints of all of our children. So our art teacher, thanks to our art, who shared earlier, our art teacher who took last year's shirt and she added all of our new kids who had come to us this year to it. So they were with me, everybody was with me.
I love the little girl's quote when she said that she doesn't have to do this, but she wants to do this.
Kirsten Trues. And I will tell you, the cameraman that interviewed her came out and he said, she is phenomenal. He said, I have interviewed politicians who aren't as articulate as she is. And I said, that's our Kirsten. So very proud of her, very proud of, just again, thank you, thank you to everyone who has supported this. The community effort's been incredible and just excited that our kids are going to have this opportunity.
Thank you for sharing.
Well, just from Friday, the children love you. They had an assembly there, the children love you to death. And the parents that come there love you to death. And I was back down at the school at 6:30 Friday night, watching soccer practice. And here comes a car rolling up and it's Whitney just leaving school. I don't know what you're doing, it's so late. But, but I mean, she's committed to making Concord a success and truly appreciate it.
We have a saying, we put a bow on the day, we put a bow on the week. I was putting a bow on the week.
We certainly appreciate it. Let's give her a hand. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I've got one other thing for you tonight. It kind of in line with our college and career theme that we seem to have had. I too would like to thank the Campbell County Education Foundation for all of their hard work. That's a huge commitment on your part as a board to support, covering the tuition for our kids that do that. Their support is certainly very much appreciated. The School Links, we're excited about that process and, and helping get parents and kids more connected to college and career opportunities. And then, of course, last month, if you didn't get a chance to come to our College and Career Day over here at the Tech Center, we're going to show you a brief little snippet from there. As you all can see, we had a great day. I want to thank Mr. Hardy and obviously Ashley Wilson for all their hard work. And I want to thank our kids because they were engaged and they represented us very well. And thank, and thank you, all of you who came and supported.
All right.
That's all.
That all you got?
Yeah.
All right, before we, before we let the board members present different topics, while Susan Brandt's still here, our former board member, Mr. Brandt, he had a little bit of cancer detected in his esophagus. And he's completed a month of chemo and radiation at UVA. He's traveled to UVA every, every week for six weeks? I mean, every day for six weeks, is that right? To have radiation and chemo and that's finished up. And Wednesday, he goes to get his initial assessment as to the effectiveness of the treatment. And then, and then the, a month from that day, he gets a, a second assessment, which is going to be more informative, I'm guessing. Anything else you can add? I mean.
So the, um, endoscopic surgeon that found his cancer, we're going back to see her on Wednesday. She's going to do the same procedure and we're hoping she's going to find that the cancer is gone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we, I mean, I only took him up there a couple of days and just those, this ride and just wears you out. I mean, it's just, but the one thing about going with Leon, he knows everything there is to know about Nelson County. I mean, from the time you crawl, from the time you get into Nelson County until you get out, he knows everything. There's nothing he doesn't know about Nelson County. And, and I know he was hurt and saw him, but he, he didn't let it show on his face. And I think the last day I went with him, we stopped at McDonald's and got chicken nuggets and barbecue sauce. And I told him, I said, Leon, that ain't the right thing for you to be eating right now between the texture and the acid and the, but, but he, he just, he's a strong man. And just keep him in your prayers.
Yes, please, thank you for the prayers. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Tell him.
Tell him we all said.
Tell him we say hello and if he needs, like I told him, we'll do, I'll do anything for him, except I ain't coming and cutting his grass. But I. Thank you.
Well, the only thing I'd add is for Leon's sake, at least you were going to UVA. It's a good thing his treatments were at Virginia Tech. That wouldn't have gone over so well.
Nah, he's a strong man. All right, Ms. Parker.
Well, thank you. Actually, I want to also thank the Education Foundation as they already know four of my five sons benefited from dual enrollment or some CT training. And they're all out there being contributing members of society, so I appreciate it very much. School Links looks great. I wish we'd had it a couple of years ago, right? Because yeah, FAFSA is no joke. And then just anyone who's applying for employment right now. You know, what a pain the online application process is. It's just absolutely nuts. So anything that would help the kids not have to go through that and not give up on spending another three hours for the next job application, you know, only be a benefit for everybody. Reached out to some principals this morning and Principal Adam from Tomahawk had some good stuff for me to share with you guys today. Thursday, the 25th, this week, they're doing their parent teacher night and also doing the art show. You know, the children's art there. And tomorrow, the Brookville Middle School students are going to judge the art. So the kids will have some awards to share with their parents, which will be super cool. And as some of you up here, as I call it behind the tablecloth, know, know I was concerned about the playground when I first got involved. And he's super excited to announce that they're doing a ribbon cutting on the new plans for the new playground. And the PTO obviously has been, been very involved. So 6:00 PM on Thursday, if you want to go to the ribbon cutting. And then getting ready for May, end of the year, where they've got two talent shows on May 24th, where Principal Adam will get slimed twice. Because apparently in the penny fundraiser, the girls won. So the male principal gets to be slimed. He's looking forward to it. You can tell by the tone of his voice on the phone today, he's really looking forward to it. Field day on the 28th and fifth grade graduations on the 30th. Then Assistant Principal Foster at the middle school, at Brookville Middle School, said the symphonic band received a unanimous superior rating in a recent competition. As well as the choir at Brookville Middle School also got all superior ratings from the judges. And even numerous comments on the good behavior and respect shown by the students. So she wanted to make sure I mentioned that for sure. Also, the school board, the, from the staff, the yearbook, the yearbook folks, the CSBA, I didn't have time to look up what the acronym meant. But for yearbook, a yearbook convention in New York, they won the Silver Crown Award for the best yearbook. Apparently, they called it the view from our angle and they're very proud of that. I want to also mention Legacy Education Center. So again, kind of like Jackie mentioning the, appreciate Jackie mentioning the upcoming program at Liberty. How many people in our community have come back and offered workforce readiness or opportunities for our kids? Right, and as you guys know, Randy Dunton works in my office. And kids went to Brookville. And Legacy Education has been doing great things. And they're having a workforce readiness event this Wednesday at Brookville High School with multiple local employers. And we'll be walking through application processes with the students there. So super excited about that. And Wednesday is Administrative Professionals Day. So appreciate your admins as we appreciate ours. First year, I forgot to bring flowers, so I'm upset with myself, but I'll make up for it. And that's all I have.
Hold on just one second. I want to make an administrative decision tonight. How many different schools do we have represented here tonight? Administration, Brookville High School, what, how many? Raise your hand.
Three.
Three?
At Concord.
Four?
Tech Center.
Brookneal.
When we're finished talking, two minutes to tell us what you want to tell us about, about what's happening at your school. Is that all right? We don't have a closed session tonight, so you got, you got a few minutes to prepare. Give us two or three minutes about what's going on in your school.
Can we do that?
No, then Jim, should we get in trouble doing it?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'll let you take my spot.
It's a public notice.
Scott?
Yeah. Again, thanks to the Educational Foundation. And, and I always say this and I'm going to say it again, thank you for all the hard work you're doing, but especially thank you to the donors. So please extend that, that we really appreciate it and just all your hard work. Also, in line with donations, and I know Ms. Parker already mentioned Georgia Pacific and Pacific Life, they have been great stewards to our county. They, every year, they pop up on, on donations. And so it's too bad we don't get an opportunity, personal opportunity, to thank the representatives of those companies. But I know Georgia Pacific's a great friend down in Brookneal and, and to our county. So I just want to emphasize our appreciation to both of those companies. And then, thank you to our speakers. Those were both uplifting comments tonight and I appreciate that. And thank you for Morgan's talk on their criminal justice. School Links, I'm very excited about that. I'm, I'm excited about how it really, it appears like it really fine tunes and makes that horribly complicated process simpler. And I'm really excited, like I said, about the, being able to follow up and really evaluate how good we're doing. So I'm, I'll be anxious to hear how it's working. And I'll be anxious to hear after the first year, how the, how it really did work. Were those kids able to get their applications in? You know, so I hope we get some feedback after this first round. And then, I think, William Campbell, middle school had a field trip. Seventh graders went to the Richmond Zoo. And Mrs. Hanson shared that it reminded her of why she still loves being a principal. She went on the, on the field trip with those kids. And just the excitement and the energy and the realization that some of those kids have never been to a zoo. And to be a witness and a part of that just reaffirmed for her and energized her. And I wanted to share that because I could hear it in her voice. And so we, we, we stay focused on, you know, our academics and career readiness and stuff. But, you know, remember field trips. You know, so she also wanted to thank her local PTO. They've done an all-in attendance celebration for the kids. And so for kids who only missed less than two days out of the nine weeks, they had gifts and stuff. But they had over, over 200 kids. So good focus on attendance and, and opportunity to share that. She wanted to share softball team's doing well, except they had a little run in against Alta Vista, but otherwise they're doing well. The elementary school, and I see both of our principals are here. Keith wanted to share that the attendance is not good, but it keeps getting better. And he really appreciates Sterling's hard work. And I want to thank him for calling parents and just staying on top of that. He also shared that they have some after-school remediation. And maybe he'll share more when he gets to speak. I don't want to steal your thunder, but 125 kids have been invited and 108 are coming. And that really helps the attendance numbers. And, and I appreciate all that effort. So he wanted me to share that. And I'm sure I've forgotten something else, but I'll stop there.
All right, I'm going to cut mine a little short when I cock to Brookville High School, so Christine can, can give some of her spiel, the highlights. But Leesville Road is, has an upcoming literacy carnival this Thursday night. And so they're all kind of gearing up for that. Tomorrow starts our kickoff with partnership with Campbell County Farm Bureau. And they've got an ag literacy program that's coming in. So the Campbell County Farm Bureau women actually purchased books to be bringing into the elementary schools. And those principals that did reach out, spoke to our 48 agent, they're got ag coming in through the, the form of some fun children's books. And so I get to read second grade tomorrow at Leesville Elementary School. So I'm excited about that and getting that kicked off. In Brookville Middle School, I'm not going to read off everything, but I had the same information that Ann did, except we also had Kathleen Perez was named as our Lynchburg Living Teacher of the Year. So that was super exciting for Brookville Middle School. In Brookville High School, we had three days, the Reality Store, last weekend back to, or last week, back to back. We're going to be starting that in all of our schools next year as part of our kind of economics, our economics, personal finance units, getting it back in. But Christine had allowed extension to come in for post-COVID. We were still coming in and kept this program going on a smaller scale. And so in order to catch all the kids up, we did that last, last week. And the comments that every time we, you know, take these kids with random jobs and they have to make a month's worth of economic decisions, they've got family profiles and it is random. So you have kids that have dentists that usually have four or five kids to make it kind of somewhat equitable. And you have people that are fish processing. of somewhat equitable. And you have people that are fish processors. They picked random jobs. They're dropouts. They've got trade school certifications. There's a great variety. But the comments from the kids, and this I think is the first year they didn't ask for where the adoption agency was for children because they learned very quickly how adoption, you know, the kids are so expensive and adoption's not an option, as we tell them and that they've got to figure it all out. But the realization that the cost of food, even from their parents' perspective, is so much more expensive than what they thought it was going to be. They thought their most expensive thing would be their house or, or their car. And they're realizing that for some of their families, just feeding them right now is a huge expense. But we really take it a step farther and talk about what if you stayed for two more years of a trade school? Or what if you pursued something with our Career Technical Center and some options for some certifications? What would it look like compared to another classmate that did not do anything post-high school or didn't pursue anything that might better their, their education and their job preparedness? So some great conversations with our kids. And the last thing is I walked in one day to Brookville High School and it was our pizza party time for attendance. And so it was great to see these kids coming down the hallways with pure excitement that they are being rewarded for their attendance with the pizza. And so realizations, we've talked about this every single time, about those little incentives for the kids and how excited they were that they were just grabbing a piece of pizza in a little ice cream cup on their way down the hall and just the little things, I think, that we've been talking about this entire year to really increase that attendance. I saw it in action. So that was great to see. And I won't say anything else that you listed. So you can, you can have some of your spiel that you'd given us earlier. That's all I got.
They couldn't have done anything more than what you've already said.
Oh, there's more. Oh, it's Brookville. Come on. There's more. I could brag all day.
All right. I also have some information from Brookville. They're hosting West Side Story. So go out and support the BHS Theater Department. I also wanted to add to the middle school yearbook. They have the Silver Crown awarded to Brookville Middle School by Columbia Scholastic Press Association at the Spring Convention in New York at Columbia University. Recognized as a Pacemaker finalist by National Scholastic Press Association. And both awards are the highest level of recognition by these organizations for overall journalism excellence. Only 45 schools received a crown award for their 2023 publications, while only 56 schools were recognized as a Pacemaker finalist. So congratulations for that, those huge accomplishments to Brookville Middle School. Also, thank you to all of our administrative staff. We appreciate everything that you do. I got to attend Career Day at Leesville Road and they had a fantastic Career Day. Thank you to all of the volunteers that came out to make the event a success and to Mrs. Breeden and Mrs. Kees for organizing the event. I was able to listen in on a military dog handler that came from the Pentagon to speak to our kindergarteners about handling military dogs. And it was so engaging and so much fun. And she wants to come back next year. And I was like, you have to, you have to have been a teacher. And she was like, I was. And then I joined the military. So that was really, really neat opportunity for our students to hear about such a unique career. I wanted to say thank you so much to all of our donors, including the Campbell County Educational Foundation. Your generosity helps our students and our community so much. And I'm reminded of a saying, "You can tell a lot about a man by his wallet and his calendar", meaning where he spends his time and where he spends his money. So thank you to those that selflessly and generously give to provide opportunities to our next generation. Last thing I have is April is the month of the military child. So I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the sacrifices of our military families and their children that they make in service to our country. And as an Air Force brat, my heart goes out to you and thank you.
That's nice. Mr. Phillips?
I don't have anything to say about Brookville. But Rustberg has a few things going on. They have their prom and the after-prom event this past weekend that went well. So thanks, everybody, for their time and effort involved with that. And they're having a financial aid boot camp on April 22nd, which was today, 5:30. The history students are taking a trip to DC on the 24th. There's a band concert on April 25th at 7:00 and a chorus concert on the 23rd at 7:00. And then there's April 30th, they're holding a senior decision day as well as athletic signing day at the auditorium at 3:15. So kind of drawing toward the end of the year, a lot going on at all the schools, but that's some of the highlights from Rustberg. And from tonight's meeting, congrats to our art student winner Jude Wellman again. I think he slipped out, but great accomplishment there. Thanks to all of our donors, particularly Campbell County Educational Foundation. Between them and the other donations, we got $66,000, which is outstanding. So thanks for everybody's efforts in that regard. College career readiness, thanks for the presentation on that. That was great. Let's see. Superintendent report. So Dr. Renella, I was flipping through TV about two months ago and saw your face on WFXR news. And I'm like, wait a minute, I have to go back. I DVR'd WFXR every Tuesday night and ended up catching your clip on your winning that we saw tonight. So congratulations again, outstanding accomplishment there. It was nice to catch your familiar face on the news for a change. And we came and visited one of John Hardy, the political science classes, Dr. Jones and I did. Spoke to the kids a couple of weeks ago. That was a really nice visit with one of the classes here. So that was enjoyable. Brookville High School, did we get a brief update, anything exciting going on with the renovation there, Dr. Stanley?
Well, I continue that they have laid the foundation for the new gym and that.
Yeah, I was going to say. Yeah, looking for a table perfer now. And then Mr. Hardy, we did visit with you about a week or so ago. Hope the visit from the Department of Education has gone well or is going well. Okay, great. So I thank you for all your efforts in accommodating that evaluation they did here at the Tech Center. So that's all I had.
Well, I am going to say something about Brookville. That award the middle school got is amazing because they beat out thousands of other schools across the United States. So that, that's an accomplishment there. Second, I'd like to congratulate Connor Maddox. He was chosen at the Model General Assembly to go to the conference on national fairs in North Carolina this summer. He was one of 20 chosen to 10 out of 700. And the donations still amaze me. I'd like to thank Glenn and Linda Miller. They donated money to our football team. But not only do they donate financially, they come to the games. I mean, they're at the basketball games. I mean, it's, and they don't have kids there. So I mean, that, that's amazing to me, but that's all I got.
I'm not going to repeat a lot. A lot's been said here tonight, but I, I do want to appreciate Jude Wellman for, for winning our art contest because I've been going to the school board convention for 25 years and we've never really participated, much less had a winner. And maybe we cracked the glass or something. Maybe we can start. Now we got to do the art contest plus that video about.
Yeah, the short video.
We just never submit. It's always Arlington schools win it and they put something idiotic together and they win. So. Y'all laugh, but I'm serious. It's an art attack.
He's, he is right. We could.
I don't know if you win any monetary thing, but, but Thursday night last week, Dr. Hale and I participated in the Central Virginia Governor's School. I guess it was the junior class presented their research projects and they had, you know how many it was total? Anyway, I had to listen to seven. And it was a group on engineering, which needless to say, the subject matter was way over my head. But it was just amazing to see the scholarly efforts of those talented, you know, students. It was just amazing. From every, I mean, from city schools, Abbeys Maddox, Campbell County, it was just amazing to see them. And I guess they had like 10 rooms of seven kids presenting. And it's a huge deal for them and it's just, it's just amazing. It was just, I remember it for a long time and look forward to it next year. And like David said, we certainly enjoyed our day here at the Early College and Mr. Nagy and Mr. Holt's hospitality and spent, took up way too much of Mr. Hardy's time. But he enlightened us on a lot of his thoughts and ideas about what we could do to expand the technology capabilities, you know, here and throughout the county. So it was very informative. And also visited the cornerstone staff, which I don't think I've ever even been in there and spoken to anybody, but it was very touching, you know, what they had to say. Dr. Renella, Mrs. Doctor, Mrs. Whitney, Doctor, too many Dr. Renellas in there. But just, just congratulations and thank you for all you do and just appreciate everything. One thing that, one thing that caught my mind, you said, the principal said she had so many kids that had never been to a zoo. Dr. Renella says there are a lot of kids at Concord don't have a bicycle. Never even have an opportunity to own a bicycle. And Mr. Hardy says amazingly, there are a lot of kids that graduate our high school, don't have a driver's license. So how do we say they're prepared to go to work if they can't have a means to get to work? So Mr. Hardy has a lot of good ideas about how we might, you know, step in and help that a little bit. But, but, you know, there are a lot of people that are, don't have the benefits of, you know, all the kids in the county. So we need to reach out to those. Went to Concord Award Assembly Friday. And like I say, the kids just love, you know, they, they get pins for being on AB honor roll, the principal's list, which is all straight As, for working hard and they love it. I mean, they work hard to make those achievements. And it's, and it's just great. Campbell County Education, thank you so much. $33,000 a night, 186 total. Thank you so much for what you do to help, you know, our kids. And I, I look more at the donation list tonight. I know Georgia Pacific and, you know, there's some other big donors, but there were a world of $200 donors. I mean, and they're giving to the sports teams and, you know, other things. And that's, that means a lot to me. This coming, let's see, what day we have a joint committee meeting? Two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, we met, had a joint committee meeting and we talked about installing a fence in Rustberg Middle School from this, from, I guess, parallel to 24 where the soccer field is for safety. Talked about the lights at Alta Vista, baseball field and potentially some type of warehouse storage. And it was a very productive meeting. And another thing, you, you tell me if I'm wrong, but I was really concerned when I went to Leesville Road a couple of weeks ago and I turned off of the bypass down Leesville Road and I saw all those housing units down. And I said, now what effect is that going to have on Leesville Road or Tomahawk? And I think they told us that there are 4,000 units approved in Campbell County. 4,000, 4,000 housing units approved in Campbell County. 1,200 have already been built and occupied. But Frank said the crazy thing is, is our school enrollment hasn't been affected at all. So makes me feel a little bit better because I guess a lot of those units bring in single families or individuals or students and don't really affect our population. But let's see. Ms. Mendez, Ms. Coleman, thank you for your comments. Couldn't agree with you more. Thank you for the opportunities. And finally, the Rustberg Middle School plant sale is Saturday at 9:00 to 3:00. My suggestion is if you want to get your, a flower for, when is Mother's Day? Is that coming up?
12, Sunday the 12th, May 12.
You won't get one, you better get there early. Cause I went there late last year or year before, whatever, and you couldn't even get in the school parking lot. So that's this Saturday at 9:00. And I think that's all I got. So we give each school two or three minutes to just come up to the microphone and tell us good stuff if it hadn't already been said.
Okay. There's been a lot of things said about Brookville High School, so I'm going to keep on with it. We're excited about Jude Wellman coming up to the high school because he's in eighth grade. So will be a part of our art program. We have our art show actually on Thursday. So it kind of coincides with Tomahawk's art show. Dame Washburn was named Lynchburg top teacher of the year through Lynchburg Living with Kathleen Perez. And construction is off and rolling. We've got foundation going for our new auxiliary gym. All of the area downstairs for the old gym is completely gone. The floor is gone. They've taken over all of the health rooms that, or the locker rooms to get ready for the kitchen equipment. So it is really moving. And I can tell you, Blair Construction has been fantastic to work with. They are just amazing. Jeff Navarro, who's the site manager, has been great. We have a problem upstairs. He comes and fixes it. He gets there well before our people do. So he is on it, very much invested in the project and really wants to see it through and make sure that it's good.
And can I say too, you've done a great job in working with them, helping them with scheduling, stopping what you're doing and answering questions when necessary. And it's, it's a lot. You all have handled it well. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been great. Thank you.
If we come tour, do we have to wear a pink hard hat?
Only you. You get the pink one. We actually have been doing tours with our teachers and our students and our students are super excited about it because they get to actually see it and visualize it because they're having a really hard time as to what it's going to look like. So when you take them downstairs and you're like, look, this is going to be this and that, it just gets them super excited about it, especially the ones that are young. The older ones are like, man, we're going to miss out on this. But we always have five hard hats on hand. So, and that's the other thing. Jeff Navarro is great. Anytime I can text him and say, hey, I've got five people here. And he's like, I'll meet you right upstairs. So he's been wonderful to work with. So come on, I got a hard hat for you.
I'll break mine off.
We did ask one of the students at the Early College, what effect did the construction at Brookville High School have? One of the first things he said, we lost our parking lot.
Parking, senior parking lot's gone.
All right. Give us another school. Y'all better get up.
Call them up. Brookville, Brookneal Tech Center.
I know Concord, Brookneal.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity at the Campbell County Tech Center. We've got a lot going on. We're bringing to a close the school year. We've got, you know, four and a half weeks to go till the end of the school year. So we're trying to put a bow on this one and trying to get ready for the next one all at the same time. So we're doing some exciting things with students, like we took a group last week to visit Cooper Steel and visit their workplace, see what jobs look like for them. And that, that was a good trip for some of our students that wanted to attend that. We've got some exciting things like welding wars coming up. That's something that I helped plan. It's a regional welding competition. So for Campbell County, we have, it takes place at CBCC. But for Campbell County, we have five high school participants. Some of them will be our dual enrollment welding students. Some of them will be from our ag program at Rustberg High School. And one of our students will be from here at the Technical Center. That's a Brookville High School student. And that's this Friday at CBCC. If you haven't ever had a chance to stop by and see that event, it's a one-of-a-kind event supported by industry. There'll be about 15 local businesses there as vendors to recruit the students, to take a look at them in the labs and see how they perform. They'll be competing to see who the top high school welders are. There's also a collegiate competition and a professional competition at it as well. And that's something that has been a labor of love for me along in partnership with the school system and, and then also CNC piping and fabrication in CBCC, as well as the Regional Business Alliance, Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. So that's this Friday. And so we're excited for students that are competing in that. We also have a wide variety of important licensure exams coming up down the stretch. So our nurse aide students will have their state licensing exam in the next month. Our cosmetology students will have their state licensing exam in the next month. And our culinary students will have their serve safe exam in the next month. So we've got a lot going on as we, we're coming down the stretch to, you know, help prepare our students for life after high school, get them those licenses that they've been working for over the past year or two. year or two, depending on their program. And so that's always exciting. And then, like I said, we're getting ready for next year already. So that takes some sketching out of scheduling. It's, we have our counselor, Lakeisha Kidd, is working very hard right now. We have an all-time record number of applicants for next year to come to the Technical Center, which is good. We have 549. That was the last time that I checked with her, either juniors or seniors in the school system that would like to take a course here at the Technical Center next year. And so that means, the unfortunate part is we'll turn away a number of students that would like to have a course here and may not be able to get in because we do have, you know, capacities that, that we will reach in certain classes and certainly have to turn some away. So that's always difficult. And those decisions are difficult. But, but it is exciting and positive for the future of the Technical Center. And then we've been working tremendously hard this year as a lot of our schools for recognition of attendance and different student accomplishments. We'll have our awards ceremony on May 21st. We'll actually do it off-site this year for the very first time at the Legacy Wealth Management Center on English Tavern Road, not too far away. They will, will host that event for us. And so we'll recognize our students and their accomplishments as completers of programs here at the Technical Center at that event. And then also some, some special accomplishments as well. We've got, you know, like I said, we've been working in attendance really hard. At the end of the third nine weeks, we had 16 students out of our 300 students here. That, that may not be a huge ratio, but they have perfect attendance. They haven't missed a single day all year. That's a pretty big number in, in my years here to this point. That's the highest number. We've tried to give them some motivators. We give out weekly attendance recognition, some, and some awards, some treats that we've put together and things like that in the main office. We've had some companies donate gift cards and things like that. So we try to recognize them weekly and monthly. And then for students that have had perfect attendance, they have a chance at our big giveaway, which is, you know, at the end of the year and at our awards ceremony is, we'll give away a vehicle. So our automotive, auto body repair class is in the middle of repairing a vehicle. They're actually painting it. The automotive technology has already made sure that everything underneath the hood is, is good to go. And so we are repainting a, a nice little truck for somebody who may not have one. Or if they've got one, it's theirs to do what they want with it. Could help them get a start after high school. And that's our goal. So that was a donation to the school and we decided to turn it into a little bit more. So we've had several students really encouraged to come to school every day just to have a shot for it. So, so that's a little bit of what's going on at the Technical Center.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I love to speak unless you're asking me to speak. And then, you know, I guess I love to talk, not speak. So it's very different. I'm Principal Brookneal Elementary School. I want to thank you for all of your support. We've had amazing after-school remediation. Our car router line's gotten a lot less, but we block 501. So if you get a phone call, we block 501 for all the parents picking the kids up. So it's been great. Even sometimes the parents come through regular car router line and the kid wants to stay, so they come back. So it's really great with that. Also, field trips are amazing. As an administrator, they're not quite as fun as they are as a teacher and as a student. But we have taken students to the zoo recently, going to Appomattox Courthouse tomorrow. We have some students who are going to go sing at a nationalization ceremony at Red Hill in a couple of weeks. We had, we wrote a grant and got to take kids to Monticello. So we, it's, they're really, really good. And it's nice. As it's coming through, the thing I'm probably the most proud of is we do, try to make learning fun and practical. So we do what's called transformations. And even though we're getting ready for SOLs and all that's driven, teachers in the last couple of weeks have had a donut shop day. And so all your math, your readings, all tied into donuts and how you make donuts. And then they actually get donuts. And we've had some really nice partnerships with some businesses. Duck Donuts come and they loved it. So now they want to give us more donuts at the end of the year. So that's really good. And one other thing, we didn't do a book fair this year, but we decided to do, just not a big deal, but we're going to do a little, we did a little book fundraiser type of thing that we didn't get any money off of. But we raised money and they gave us so many books. So we didn't think it was going to be that big a deal. But it ended up being raised in over $22,000. And we have over 2,000 books that are going home to kids. Some are staying in the library. It's just amazing the support we get on everything we do down there from the community. And, and it's nice because as the things get tough, you like to have some of the fun things or the things that are a little different. And so that's pretty much it.
Dr. Whitney, you got the call?
You've heard a lot already. I'll take 30 seconds.
You can take the whole time you want.
No, you've heard a lot about Concord.
The buzzer will go off after three minutes.
Okay. We too are doing after-school some truancy remediation. We do not have 100 kids. That's amazing, Keith and Sterling. We have about 40. And then we also have, and that's Tuesday and Thursday. And then we have 20 4th and 5th graders that are staying on Thursday for the Wild Robot Book Club. And it is, you walk by that classroom and they are just so excited to be there. So actually this afternoon, a 3rd grader was in the office because she thought today was a Tuesday and she thought she was supposed to stay. So she missed her, she missed her ride home. And then we are having community helpers in 1st grade on Wednesday at 2:00. So if you would like to come, that's at 2:00 on Wednesday. So, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody got anything else to say? The security grant we got, have there been plans made for that money yet?
Yes, Dr. Rennella handles that. And it's got certain, certain goals, I think, for each school.
Well, I know that it's almost May and it's almost SOL time. So I wanted to ask you guys how we can best support our students and our teachers during this upcoming time.
Prayers.
Well, I think we've got our schedule ready to go. And then, you know, just, just hope we have a good routine and then things go smoothly and kids perform well.
Here's some more donuts.
I don't know if that's a good thing. That's not routine.
And the yearbook teacher, you met her, that's Ms. Wellman at the beginning. That's her son, who won the art teacher. So the yearbook teacher at Brookville Middle School, that's Ms. Wellman. I know it's a lot of people tonight. But Ms. Wellman is the yearbook teacher at Brookville Middle and she does a phenomenal job. That is a very prestigious award. But just so you got a face with, with that as well, in case you don't know.
Because it's a small group of kids. I mean, it's.
Yearbook's a lot of work. And so they do a great job.
Anything else on the list?
Do we have a closed meeting?
Nope, no better. It got resolved outside of.
Okay. Yeah, Friday afternoon it was late, so we didn't mess with the agenda.
Entertainer motion?
Great meeting. Great meeting.
Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Dr. Muller, second by Ms. Tanner, we adjourn. All those favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank y'all.